We're getting counted in.
Four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2023, under legislation enacted in July 2022. The statute, Chapter 4 of the Acts of 2022, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. The meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our hearts go out to those impacted by the tragedy in Nashville. At this time, I ask that we take a moment of silence. Thank you. There is no correspondence this evening. I will entertain a moment, a motion to approve the minutes from the March 20th meeting.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2023, school committee meeting as presented.
Second? Roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Are there any visitor comments at this time? Okay, we'll move right along to school committee announcements and recognitions. Thanks, Gianna.
Thanks, Mary. So, I might have mentioned this before, but I'm gonna mention it again because something else great happened with it. The Long Meadow High School, Center School, Glenbrook, and a couple other schools in Long Meadow participated in a Dear Cadet card campaign where we were collecting cards for the cadets of the United States Coast Guard Academy. And across the country, we collected more than 2,000 cards, drawings, art, everything just amazing. So again, just wanna express appreciation. The cadets received those cards on Monday, and then there's a gallery of the extra cards that's up in, on campus there at the academy until Saturday. But the lyrics, Long Meadow lyrics, this week, or last week, taped them singing the National Anthem as a serenade to the cadets at the academy, and it is beautiful. I'll share it with you, Superintendent, and so it could find its way to the, maybe the Facebook page or the website. But, so I just wanted to thank the Long Meadow community, the Reagan and lyrics, because it really, it's a beautiful thing, and I get to share because I run the Parents Association page for the academy. And so the parents just love this kind of stuff because, you know, we're showing our love and appreciation for our, our military, boys and girls, sorry, sons and daughters, cadets. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Anyone else? I attended the elementary parent teacher conferences last week at Center School. I'm always appreciative of the feedback from teachers. And also, I'm excited for the plays that are happening at the middle schools. My daughter is in the one at Williams, so we'll be there. All right, so moving right along to business with guests. I think we have Beth Nelson. Welcome, Beth.
Do. No, there's Beth.
Hey, everybody.
So, I'll take a minute to introduce Beth, and we'll queue up a video that she brought along with her. So, each of the school committee asked the superintendents to showcase a learning activity that is illustrative of the vision of the graduate. And so Beth is here to show you a video that showcases the competencies, and I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any of our questions. Any, any intro, Beth, that you wanna add before we queue up the video?
No, I just wanna say, you know, I think when we were asked to come with something, I immediately thought of our new STEAM class, which you all supported us bringing to the middle school as a related arts last year. And I was very fortunate to find John McCarthy to teach this course for us this year, and he has brought the most magnificent level of enthusiasm to education. He is so refreshing and so reflective as a teacher, and it's just, it's a joy to walk into that classroom every single day. You can see any student successful in that environment. And I think because of that, it lends itself so well to the competencies that we're trying to develop with our vision of the graduate. And our students, Maddie, Caroline, and Ansel, are going to tell you a little bit more about how they progressed through this class and their most recent project.
So I'll queue up the video, and Beth, just give us a thumbs up to let us know that you can hear and see it okay.
Okay.
Hi, my name is John McCarthy, and I'm the STEAM teacher here at Williams Middle School. Today, I just wanna show you some student work on one of our recent units, the Long Meadow Pedestrian Bridge. Students were tasked to solve the problem of limited pedestrian access over the Connecticut River from the Long Meadow and Springfield region, in addition to try to create an attractive resource for the area. Students worked in teams to go, went through the engineering design process, applied topics in science around structural forces, compression, tension, and load, used mathematics to create scale drawings, apply technology in the creation of a video that you're about to see, and then use the arts both within their technology and within their bridge. This unit was also recently certified by WPI as a highly qualified STEM unit. I hope you will enjoy it. Thank you so much, and I'd love to hear some feedback, or if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Without further ado, I'll pass on to our students. Thank you.
Hi, we are MAC Engineering, Maddie, Ansel, and Caroline, and this is our Long Meadow Pedestrian Bridge solution.
MAC Building has been hired by Mass Bike to produce a model of a pedestrian bridge for the town of Long Meadow, but our bridge needs to be built around certain criteria that make the task much more difficult, and ensure that the bridge is built to the highest quality. Some of the constraints on our bridge is that it has to span at least 14 inches, has to hold at least 50 pounds, has to load nice for its users and the surrounding community, and has to be useful for its pedestrian users.
This is our scale drawing and prototype. Our scale drawing has a scale factor of one-third, and our prototype is a truss bridge with an arch.
For our design, we chose to take elements from both arch and truss bridges. Truss bridges are efficient and distribute tension and compression along the triangles. Arch bridges are very strong and only get stronger with time. We combined these two formats to create a bridge that would easily withstand the required weight.
So here are some key features that we provide in our pedestrian bridge. The first key feature that we included was bike racks where pedestrians can walk with their bikes on both sides of the bridge. This will allow them to take as long as they want on the bridge, just walk around and take in the view of the Connecticut River and skyline of downtown Springfield without having to push around their bikes around the bridge. Another key feature that our pedestrian bridge provides is a rain roof. In order to make sure people can enjoy the bridge on all parts of the day, we have made a rain roof with a draining system that ensures rain and snow will not be a problem if pedestrians want to go for a walk. The drainage system will make sure that the rain does not build up and make the rain roof collapse. The water goes out and into the river. We also have handles on the bridge to help people walk who may have trouble walking. This will let less able people to enjoy fresh air with a nice supportive walk. Here's our live load test data information. Our bridge held a total weight of 25 pounds. It held bricks and cans. The total for the bricks were 889.8 ounces, and the total for the cans were 174.2 ounces. Although our bridge was a little wobbly at first, after adding more weight to the bridge, it became less and less wobbly. Here we have a picture of this bridge and its components. As you can see, we have labeled the two abutments, which is gonna be at each side of the Connecticut River. We also have tresses, which are in triangle shapes. As you can see, they're right above the deck, and we have some also below the deck on the arch. We have compression on the top. It is going forwards together. As you can see, the two arrows pointing inward. We also have compression going throughout the tresses as well, on top of the deck and on the bottom of the deck. We also have tension going through those tresses and going on the deck. As you can see, the arrow is going outward. You can also see on the tresses, there are triangles going completely because there is both tension and compression in our tresses because they are triangles. We, so when we put the live load, it will go on the deck, which the tension just has to stabilize that, and that's where force will, most force will be located from that live load.
In the process of building a bridge, we needed to rely on each other. If we weren't able to count on each other for help and support, we never would have gotten the bridge to where it needed to be. Independence was a crucial part of our team's dynamic when building the bridge. Each one of us could trust our teammates to complete different tasks and build parts of the bridge with little or no help. Our team not only had to build a bridge, we needed to thoroughly understand how bridges and architecture work. We also had to sometimes build off the knowledge we had beforehand without research.
Communication. We need to communicate during this process because we are all doing different jobs. At the beginning of each class, we would talk together and discuss what each person would complete during the class period. If we would not do this, people would have nothing to do or would have gotten off task. Also, if we didn't communicate, we would have gotten the bridge measurements wrong, causing one person to build something bigger than the other. Problem solving. We used problem solving while making our bridge because our bridge, when we originally built it, was wobbly, so we had to come up with a way to fix it. We communicated and came up with solutions to add toilet poo holes in the middle between each part of the bridge. Then when we glued it back together, the bridge was stable. Collaboration. We used collaboration while building this bridge because first, we had to pick what bridge we wanted to make during the brainstorm process. One of my teammates wanted to make a truss bridge, meanwhile, me and my other partner wanted to make an arch bridge. We put our ideas together and made a very strong bridge. If we did not collaborate, who knows if our bridge would have been as strong.
Look at that.
Yeah.
Impressive.
Twenty-five.
Wow. That's excellent. All right.
This was awesome, Beth. Thank you so much. Are there any comments from the committee, or Beth, do you have any other things that you'd like to share?
I just think it's really incredible, the language that they shared in that video, like, the way that they spoke about what they learned. I think giving these kids this experience in middle school. The bridge project this year was only for seventh and eighth graders, so sixth graders did not do it. So that's something that they'll build on next year, will continue to build the curriculum so that the seventh graders will have other opportunities next year, too. Eighth graders also raced, they built their own solar powered cars and raced them last Friday, the last day of the trimester. Both eighth grade classes had a car that was faster than Mr. McCarthy's, so they both won a pizza party, which was a big hit. Had half the cafeteria emptied on Friday while all the eighth graders were down in the STEAM classroom. And then our seventh graders had to build rockets that had to stay in the air for over five seconds and go more than 200 feet up in the air, and just watching that, and they had to keep an egg. So, you know, the old fashioned egg drop that they used to do in eighth grade, like, now they're building rockets, setting them 200 feet in the air, keeping them in the air for more than five seconds, and I think only two eggs cracked. So it's, what they learned in a 13-week trimester course is just unbelievable, and I can't wait to see, you know, what our sixth graders, because they're gonna have this class for three years, what they're gonna gain from this. Really, really exciting.
That's great. Other comments? Gianna?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, Beth, I was gonna say the same, and I'm sitting next to a scientist, so I have to, so I'm laughing at myself, but like, they were using abutment and compression and like, tresses. I was like, I, like, I probably still can't even spell those words, so like, the, and not just the use of the words, but they understand what they're talking about, and then to apply that and build, like, something that holds 100 pounds, like, that's, that's super impressive. I wish the kids were here, and I know I can only speak for myself, but please give them a big woohoo when you see them, and the teacher, too. Thank you.
That's great. Marty, did you have a comment?
Yeah, no, if we're fortunate enough to secure a design team for the, for a new middle school project, they might go to the MAC. But, yeah, the way they presented it, you know, the full soup to nuts product from the, from the research to the presentation, even the application of the Canva technology, I thought that was outstanding. Like, that's no small feat either, really. I mean, maybe it is for these kids, but, but I thought the way they, the way they presented their learning was outstanding, so. Thanks for sharing, Beth. That was outstanding. Appreciate it.
Beth, I'd just like to add, I love that they had to solve a real world problem, because I bet every time they drive over the river, they're going to say, "I designed a bridge", and we could be walking, we're riding our bikes right now. Like, I just feel like that connection to something that is relevant, that they see every day, is really valuable. And I also noted just the embedded videos, the illustrations, the animations, and the slides. I mean, that is almost as impressive as the project itself, and to be able to articulate what they learned. And I love that their bridge wobbled at first, and that they had to come up with a way to fix that, because I think sometimes when things don't go as planned, you learn just as much as when it all goes perfectly, so it's a great example to share with us. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Sue?
Just a thanks to these two teachers. They started fresh out of the gate. Emery Salavana Glenbrook took on STEAM. She was a technology teacher prior to that, and Mr. McCarthy joined us, and he has some experience, but they both went off to STEAM school this summer and spent a lot of their time developing curriculum and learning how to teach STEAM, and it really shows. I was lucky enough to be in their class, John's class, a few weeks ago, and the kids are just like, so engaged, and it's rigorous and relevant, and it's a really great class, so thanks for improving that change last year.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sorry. Yes.
Yeah, no, this is great, and, yeah, I think it's an awesome experience for the kids, and one thing that I just wanna reflect on, is I remember our discussions in this committee about how we really wanted kids at both middle schools to have this experience, and I think it's really powerful to see, like, decisions that we make here sometimes seem a little abstract, but it's great to see presentations like this to remind us, like, yeah, this is really important, and impacts these kids in really powerful ways, so thank you.
I think I say this every time kids present, but it really is my favorite part of all of these meetings, so thank you very much for sharing their expertise and their project, and thank you too, Beth, for your time tonight.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Great. So moving on to our middle school math recommendation. Sue, Marty and I spoke, and we'd like to move that into curriculum sub before taking it to the larger committee, if that's amenable to everybody. Okay, great. So we'll table that for now, and we'll move right on to our other reports. Nicole is not here tonight. We do not have a school committee chair report, but I'll turn it over to Dr. O'Shea for the superintendent's report.
Sure, a few items for you tonight. Appreciation to Tom Aza and the Chair of the School Building Committee, Armin Ray, for finalizing our design enrollment with the MSBA. It appears that they'll offer us a design enrollment of 665 students, which is sort of a baseline number that will ultimately shape the size and scope of a new school, where we, if we are fortunate enough to move forward with a project. And, you know, truly, the, the size of the building could exceed that 665. They come up with a design enrollment that's sort of about 85% of the full capacity that you could, you could enroll at the school. So it does appear that, we had hoped that we would be in front of the MSBA board in April. They're now telling us that we will be in front of the MSBA board at their June meeting, so assuming they, assuming that goes as planned, we will be able to move forward with a feasibility study agreement with the MSBA, which would put us in a position to secure a design team and a project manager. So exciting times, could be, you know, some work we'll have to get busy with over the summer, assuming that it goes the way we hope it does in June. LHS Athletics, a few years back, we developed a few processes to ensure that we were creating mechanisms for feedback and communication, so at the end of each athletic season, Mr. Capitasto, our Athletic Director, issues surveys to athletes and families, and they're encouraged to fill those out. Mike has established a captain's council, they're gonna be doing some training. Once again, I think it's the second or third time this year with an outfit called Empowered Leadership. And then Thursday night, Mr. Landers, Mr. Capitasto, and I are gonna meet with, hopefully, representatives of the Booster Club, so it's a, it's a good way to sort of tighten things up as we prepare for the spring season. If, mark your calendars, May 22nd, if you're able to join us, we'll be hosting a senior citizen luncheon and concert. Appreciation to Diane for working on the logistics of that event. I know our committee members have important day jobs, so, but if you are able to attend, May 22nd, we kick off at 12:45, I think it is. Yep. Last day of school, I think the committee's aware, we'll have a sort of staggered conclusion to the end of the school year, will, are, assuming we have no more snow or other interruptions, last day of school for four schools will be Wednesday, the 14th. Center Schools' last day will be Thursday, June 15th, and then Glenbrook will conclude on Friday, June 16th. So a staggered end of the year for our schools, but it shouldn't present any problems logistically. And exciting thing going on, our students, you know, they, they think they amaze us at every turn. I met with representatives of the LHS Climate Club recently, and they came to us with an idea to introduce metalware instead of plastic ware at the LHS cafeteria. They were compelling, they were convincing, and we have agreed to move forward with that on a pilot basis, and so we've asked the students to assist us with the marketing and the educational awareness that goes along with that, just to ensure that there's not a lot of loss or disposal of metalware unintentionally or otherwise. Middle school drama, we got two plays at the end of, it's March 30th, March 31st, Macbeth at Glenbrook on the 30th, Don Quixote at Williams on the 31st. We have a K-5 Elementary Math Night, April 4th, a SEAL Parent Training on April 12th, Earth Day, back it up on April 1st, that's a town event, not a school event, but check it out on the town website. And a lot of great stuff going on still with the close community. They have a survey that they have issued to parents and caregivers that encourage folks to take part in. It helps us understand how we can target our resources and develop prevention strategies. So lots of good stuff going on. It's a busy spring, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Gianna?
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Superintendent. For the, for the Booster Club meeting, Superintendent? Is that just spring sports booster clubs?
Wait, I think, I think spring, spring booster leaders have been invited. I'm not sure we, yeah, so we try and get it every season, but...
Oh, so there might be one for fall, okay. And then the, you just said it, and then you made me, you made me think of it, the utensil project.
Yes.
It's great. I love anything that's trying to help, you know, the environment, especially living with a environmentally friendly daughter, but, so that's like knives also, knives, forks, and spoons?
Yes, yeah.
And so we're talking metalware.
Metalware, yes.
So it's gonna be, like, through the dishwasher? Are they gonna have, like...
So Mr. Mazza may have some information on that, but they may, yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to have some, you know...
I still got like, you know, like...
The equipment is prepared for cleaning.
Risk management, in the back of my head, a bunch of things.
Yes, they would be run through the dishwasher. We're gonna make an initial investment on purchasing, you know, a stock to have available. I think the knives might be something, we'll wait and see if there's a demand for, and have a stock of plastic knives available, but definitely the forks and spoons to see how it goes. There's obviously concern about loss replacement, as we have trays that need to be replaced every year. We seem to have a dwindling inventory as the year progresses, so I'm sure it'll be much easier for silverware to slip through. So we wanna see how it goes. The students were charged with coming up with kind of a informational slash educational program for students to understand why the change is being implemented, and ask for their support to ensure that they're not just disposing of the reusable silverware.
Yeah, true. And then, 'cause I was thinking, and again, I'm sitting next to a scientist, but like, my brain is just thinking, when, when initiatives come up, like, and I love the initiative, you know, like, I'm not, like, I'm just kind of just more out of curiosity, like, are they gonna do a way to, like, figure out, you know, 'cause now you have heat and hot water expenses versus, like, the expense of, you know, things that could be recycled, so are they gonna do that, too, or is that just, like...
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll at least try to track how many cycles of dishwasher are used for the utensils. You know, again, not every meal that gets served requires utensils to consume, so I think we, you know, we're doing it for the month of May is when, you know, we've committed to have this implemented for, and to see how it goes, and the beginning inventory, ending inventory, loss of product, and then, you know, the number of cycles, to kind of figure out the impact of not only water, electricity, detergent, you know, that is used for the cycle. So, yeah, we are gonna be looking at that.
Okay, and again, I, I love the idea, and I appreciate the students' efforts and your guidance, but like, at home, you know, my husband will make fun of me because I'll use a glass, but I'll put it back in the fridge, and I'll, "Why are you doing..." I'm like, "'Cause it'll take, you know, hot water and, you know, to clean it if I use, you know, so anyway."
Use it, yeah.
That was just what I was thinking. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Gianna. Anyone else? All right. Thanks very much, Marty.
Yep.
Tom, I know you don't have a full superintendent's, or assistant superintendent's, report, but just had a few comments tonight.
Yeah, just a couple, couple updates on two items. The, you may recall back in February, Center School experienced a leak in the heating system during that cold spell. Six rooms were displaced based on the damage from the water. Restoration continues. We have been able to bring four rooms back online with the hope that the remaining two will be available for, starting next week, understanding that there are still some outstanding, some outstanding work related to the rooms' painting, which we hope will be done over April vacation. And then the shelves, built-in shelves by the window case, by the windowsills, is definitely a much longer lead time, so there was some fabrication of some temporary shelving to cover the heating elements that are in those rooms. So work is ongoing, but we have definitely have made some significant progress in getting those rooms back online, and the students and staff into their classrooms instead of in the temporary spaces. The second item is in regards to the food service program's request for proposal. If you may recall, earlier in the year, I mentioned we are in our fifth year with our current contractor, and we are required under USDA regulations to go out to rebid the services. The bid has been advertised and available to vendors. Submission date is April 6th, and with a review of about a month, with a recommendation sometime in early May to the school committee for award. If there are any... If there are any school committee members who are interested in serving on that evaluation committee of the RFPs, please let me know. The time commitment is dependent upon how many responses we receive from vendors. But you'd have about the month of April to review the material. And then the first week of May, there might be some in-person time needed as the evaluation committee would get together and kind of go through the evaluation process. The vendors that submitted proposals would be invited to come in and do a presentation to the evaluation committee as part of the evaluation process. But also extended to any parents or caregivers at home who have an interest in the program to please reach out to me and let me know if I can give more information in regards to the the time that they would have to be available to participate. But I just wanted to update the committee on that also.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Yep, sorry.
Just a quick, thank you for all that time. When I used to work at my school and we got hit by a tornado and, you know, everything was ruined and stuff, but a lot of water damage, we never went back into the building, but we did have to go back in to get some stuff. Any any mold concerns in the two rooms at Center School or like?
No, I mean, as part of the restoration process, the sheet rock was removed in all of the rooms that were impacted by water and provided with dehumidifiers and fans. And then sensing water moisture sensing sensors were placed to ensure that there before the restoration work and sheet rock was reinstalled that there was no moisture issues still present in those rooms. So no, no concerns in regards to mold at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Others?
So the vendor you're talking about is the just the food services provider? Is it the interface where you put money in your card? Is that like a different or you put money in your account? Is that a different vendor?
It is. It's it's separate from the vendor that does our food service and management, correct. But if you have questions about that, please reach out because we are thinking about a change with or upgrading our current software.
Okay, I think I'm most interested in there is that you get charged per transaction, which is like regressive, right? Because if you can't put all the money at the time, you're in a worse in worse shape.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know if there's any online payment system for this program that the charges aren't passed back on to the individual families instead of at the district.
Yeah, in my other life, I've been talking to the USDA about this. I'm going to circle back with you on it.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Anyone else? Tom, I I was thinking about individual teacher supplies. I know that there was a lot of damage to materials and are is that just a loss for those individual teachers? Or were we able to?
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on things they made on their own. It's hard for us to quantify. But instructional materials in their room that got damaged by the the water, we most certainly, I think, have been working with Sue's office in terms of identifying what those losses are. Classroom libraries, I know some rooms, the new math materials have been impacted. So the number corners, I think, in a couple rooms, we had to we had to. Yeah, order replacements for those rooms. So, you know, we asked the teachers to identify when they came in when we were moving them out to try to just quantify what we're what we're disposing of to be able to one, replace it, but also submit that to insurance as part of our claim.
Thank you.
Right. I think last time too, we were talking about like almost like a wish wishlist. Because I know some of the education, you know, we're all educators basically, but we were saying like, like if I might have stuff at at my school that, you know, usually we get stuff from Center School, but you know, if or go to the bookstore and buy some, you know, that kind of stuff.
We're able to order some pretty quickly. We took pictures of a lot of stuff that we made and I'm ready for the get-go, so. We have a lot of new supplies already, but.
Thank you. Sue, do you have a report tonight or any updates? Okay, thank you. And then I'd like to turn it over to Diane, who has some exciting news to share before he provides his student report.
Sure. Yeah, big stuff. So I have been appointed to the United States Military Academy at West Point, proud to say. For the camera, so. This is what it looks like, ladies and gentlemen. West Point on the front, and it reads certificate of appointment on behalf of the President of the United States of America and the Admissions Committee of the United States Military Academy. I take great pleasure in presenting this certificate of appointment to Dagan Connor Connolly. Won't say that when you get yours. For the class of twenty twenty-seven, signed Stephen W. Gillard, Lieutenant General, United States Army, Superintendent of the Academy. I just like would like to thank all of my, obviously, my teachers throughout the years. I know they're very proud of me. All you on the committee, beyond the committee, definitely definitely got me here, all my coaches, and just Long Meadow Public Schools in general. I would not have be anywhere close to this opportunity without the opportunities that I was already given by people in this district. And just thank you so much, and I can't can't wait to see you guys in four years when I when I graduate and I come back to speak to anyone who wants to go to a service academy. Now I get to meet my job. Thank you, thank you. So two report, so I haven't been here in a while, but we had a lot of events. So the senior class play, Mean Girls, was in it, Aaron Samuels. Loved every minute of it. Hit shows, almost sold out Monday, definitely sold out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, a little light, but it was great. Great time, all those who participated absolutely loved it. The senior class was so well involved, and what a great experience for all. And from what I heard, it was a pretty good show. I mean, I didn't get to watch it, but it was pretty good. The class of twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six respectively both had basketball tournaments, each individual class. Those went really, really well. I got to see the freshman class because I had to pick up my brother from hit from, you know, bawling on some kids, which was great since, you know, he's six-four, lucky lucky guy. Moving into the spring, every class will be having a dance of some kind, I believe. You know, the freshman dance, the sophomore semi-formal, the junior spring fling, and then obviously prom for the seniors. So very busy, very busy dance spring. So moving into clubs, drama is is doing the Outsiders. It will be in this spring show. On that cast list has already been developed and sent out. And then LHS Model Congress, which I am the president of, will be sending four delegates to the AIC Model Congress Conference this week. It's eighty, I think it's the eighty-fifth conference held at AIC this Friday and this Saturday. So myself and then three other students will be attending. And we we create our own bills, we write our own bills according to a format set by the United States Congress, and we literally try to get our bill passed through Congress, the entire congressional process. And it's a really great time. I have met so many friends from New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and surrounding states. So it's going to be it's going to be really fun. Other part of this weekend, on Friday and Saturday, Long Meadow High School will be attending the MICA festival for band, orchestra, and choral. MICA is a adjudicated, I would say, event that each each group can go part of their repertoire or they learn new repertoire for MICA, and they get feedback from world from world-class conductors from around the state and nation. And it's just an all-great event. You can come home with gold, silver, or medal of merit. Hopefully, Long Meadow usually does, and will hopefully come back with all gold medals in orchestra, band, and choral respectively. On Fri- Thursday, Long Meadow Music is hosting Morris Hills High School from New Jersey. They are actually going on tour to Boston from New Jersey, but they're making a stop in Long Meadow to work with Dr. Abercrombie, the department chair of Caleb Roland's husband, since he is a conductor at UMass. He's going to be offering a session to them. And then we are going and then Long Meadow Lyrics, our symphony band, their choir and their symphony band are going to be doing a joint concert, which is going to be really great. And then finally, we do have the Senior Citizen Concert coming up. I will I'm lyric, so I will be performing along with Cecilia Allen Tuck. So that's going to be a great time. Hope to see you all there. And then finally, for athletics, spring sports has started, like Dr. O'Shea said. Congratulations to anyone who, you know, made made their teams. I know it was a it was a very competitive year, a lot of competitive classes for all sports. And then Captain's Council, like Dr. O'Shea said, will be hosted Thursday. And then Empower Leadership will be holding their own training. I was fortunate enough to go to the fall captains, as I was a captain for the football team in the fall. And that being a track captain for the spring, I'll get to experience that again. Hopefully, I see some new new stuff coming from new people in different captains and different sports and really get to enjoy that that leadership development. And that is all I have to report at this time, thank you.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
To you, and thank you for the update. Are there any comments or questions from the committee?
Oh, yes, sorry, Jean. I'm going to get teared up, but it's so, Dagan, just thank you for your service. And I know, you know, I can be goofy and silly sometimes, but it like I was raised to to love our military and appreciate and and you as a young adult who have literally the world at your fingertips and you're choosing to serve, I'm just myself truly grateful, but also very proud of you. And been waiting a long time to hear this news, so congrats again, and thank you.
To respond to the sound talk, the National Commander of the American Legion, I met la- last year, coined this coined the phrase when, this is obviously a veteran organization, so they're here, thank you, sir, you service a lot. And he coined the phrase, because you're worth it. And I think that's where my service obligation comes from. That's what I think I'm going to say in the future in my entire career, and especially to you, because you're worth it. Thank you.
Great, anyone else? So I have a report for LPVEC. Roland Doyle, who is the executive director, is retiring. And so we are wish we wish him well in, you know, his next endeavor. And he will be working through the end of the school year. In the meantime, we are beginning an executive director search, which is a big and involved process. We're partnering with NESDEC to conduct that search. More details will be coming about exactly what this looks like, but some of the preliminary information, on April sixth, parents and students are welcome to drop by to provide input about what they would like to see in an executive director. They can also drop by via Zoom, so there'll be a Zoom link. We're working with someone whose name is Margaret Freezwick. She's from NESDEC. I had a Zoom meeting with her and the rest of the committee. She's very impressive. She's done this before. It's a very scaffolded process that you go through with really clear steps about communication and timelines and all that, and lots of opportunities for community and family input. And then the reason for the drop-by sessions and also a student survey, which will go out through the superintendents to the collaborating districts, is because the interview questions will then be based on what the feedback is and what what we're looking for in in a director. So hang tight, I'll provide you with more information as I know more. But if anybody has any questions at this time, I'm happy to try to answer them. Okay?
Mary, you going national with the search, or?
I think so, Marty, do you know?
Yeah, I think just by virtue of the way it's posted, we have a national reach. Paris Crowe, our superintendent director of Food Services, is going to represent Long Meadow on that screening committee.
Oh, great, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Energy and sustainability?
No report.
No report. And SEAL?
SEAL, thank you, Mary. Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, uh-huh. Superintendent, you already shared April, and thank you so much for sending out the email.
Sure.
And for also mentioning it again to like, this is, you know, really wanting to to build momentum for SEAL. So that meeting is next Wednes- no, Wednesday, April twelfth. So that's in two two Wednesday, it's not even Wednesday today. So April twelfth, Wednesday, April twelfth, sealma.org. It's going to be another fantastic workshop. And again, thank you, Superintendent, for sharing the information about the meeting.
Thank you, Gianna. Questions, comments? All right, moving right along to our subcommittee reports. We have a report from the Finance Subcommittee.
You want to take it away?
I will, sure. Thank you. Good evening. You have a number of items on your agenda tonight for consideration. Finance sub met pack on March twenty-third. And so in your packet are a two FY twenty-three budget reports, kind of projecting out to the best of my ability where I hope or see things going over the course of the next few months. I would say that those reports most certainly are subject to change as staffing vacancies continue to occur, leave of absences happen from now until the end of the year. It's projecting out utility consumption and related costs for the remain probably the last quarter or so of the year. So I would say they're they're trending right where we would expect them, although I don't think our general fund appropriation will have the resources at the end of the year that we have had seen in previous years, you know, due to a whole bunch of different factors that we've encountered this year. So but I'm happy to to answer any questions. They're they're primarily informational, Finance Sub did review them in our meeting. So but if anybody has any questions, please feel free to let me know or later on after the meeting, if you want to reach out, please feel free. Also included is a a budget transfer and a request for approval. So this would be related to our grants and special revenues. This is our budget transfer number three. And it is basically recognizing an increase in a number of our title grants and also catching up with the approval and funding for the high-quality math instruction grant, which was the money that was used to help purchase the elementary math curriculum that we bought at the beginning of the year. So it kind of slipped through the cracks, and this now will recognize the receipt of that grant and the funds and associate that with the expenditure that we had back in the summer. So the total increase for the budget would be a hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars with a majority of that, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars associated to the math grant that we received. So happy to answer any questions members may have in regards to that transfer.
And Tom, this is we every year around this time, this is something Kevin will probably say anyways, this is the normal course of business this time of year. And then near the end of the year, it'll be more discretion of yourself and Dr. O'Shea to kind of close out the books and get the money in the right lines. It's kind of what we're doing.
Yes, you know, again, we process numerous transfers throughout the year. This year, again, the state and federal government increased some of the allocations that the committee recognized and accepted back in the fall. And so these are, in most cases, small changes to those award amounts for those grants that need to be incorporated into our budget and then applied to the lines where we anticipate those related expenses will occur.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, I do.
I move on the recommendation of Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved. The budget transfers is outlined in the document titled FY twenty-three, General Fund Budget Transfers Number Three, dated March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gianna. Go call, vote, Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes, for me.
So next on our agenda would be consideration for the school choice and medco slots for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I believe it was on our agenda last week, and the committee asked that Finance Sub take up to review it and come back in regards to the recommendation for those two programs. And so Finance Sub did review the inform- the proposed recommendations, which would be for approval of two seats in grade one and two seats in grade nine for the choice program, as we currently do have three students graduating from the choice program. So it would. so it would result in a net increase of one student in that program, which would basically keep our funding about the same. Um, the School Choice Program provides for five thousand dollars for each student that is enrolled. And so, uh, basically would tie back to the amount we budgeted for FY24. And Finance Sub did recommend, uh, the slots as listed in the agenda.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions?
The one thing I will mention that we discussed during the meeting as well is this is, this is the, what we said. It was the initial of what we thought was an appropriate floor. However, we do have wiggle room, but we don't have a ton of time for wiggle room. As things change, as numbers become more firm, you know, if we want to adjust, we have time to adjust, but don't wait forever. It's kind of what you said, Tom. It's kind of, you get to May and June, you're kind of pushing, pushing it a little bit if we want to open up more slots. So I think it'd be something we probably want to revisit eventually, but this at least puts a floor to let us kind of get it out there that this is, this is our initial.
All right, great. Thank you. And I see Diane making a note of that, so thank you.
I was just gonna, I was gonna provide, Tom, with a, would they have to certify the, um, school choice numbers by June 1st, with the state?
Okay.
So you have through the month of May.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Perfect.
Um, great. Uh, so I will entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee approve opening seats for school choice students in the 2022-2023 school year in the following grades and number of seats per grade. Grade One, two seats. Grade Nine, two seats.
Great. Do we have a second? Thank you, Gianna. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you.
So for the Medco program, um, the recommendation is to add two seats in kindergarten and two seats at Grade Nine. Uh, this program does not have any students slated to graduate this June. So this would result in a net increase of four students in the program. Uh, Medco operates a little different than School Choice does. It is a grant program in which the state budget authorizes an allocation for the Medco program. And so s- the funding is somewhat dependent upon the number of total students that are in the Medco program as we receive it based on a, um, a per-student allocation. So, um, it's kind of hard to say exactly what next year's budget will be, but we have been seeing, I think, a slight increase in our overall grant. I think as you saw in the previous, uh, budget approval, that the Medco grant was, uh, increasing by about twenty thousand dollars. So it is dependent upon the number of students that each district has. Um, and I think to what Jamie also said would apply to the Medco program also in terms of, uh, if there is capacity later in the spring that's identified, we could, uh, approve additional slots based on that, um, availability.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the School Committee accept students into the Medco program for the 2023-2024 school year in the following grade levels and number of seats. Kindergarten, two seats. Ninth grade, two seats.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Thank you. And the final item for consideration is the setting of the preschool tuition fee for, um, future years. So currently in FY23, we charge, uh, the tuition is twenty-two hundred dollars. Um, just as a reminder, our program is a half-day program of approximately two and a half hours, um, five days a week based on a school year calendar, and we do have AM and PM offerings. Um, Finance Subcommittee has, uh, looked at, you know, the increases we've had over the last couple of years, what our fees are charged in surrounding communities, and has, uh, proposed a increase for the 23-24 school year of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and also proposed setting the rates for subsequent years at 24-25, uh, at two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And for the 25-26 school year, uh, three thousand dollars. And then, um, also would apply a hundred dollar discount for anybody that pays, uh, the fee, the tuition in full by August 1st of that school year. I think some of the, uh, thought process was that instead of coming back every year and setting this in the spring, families can plan knowing that the fee has been established at least for the next three years, um, in terms of, uh, what that tuition would be. And also just as a reminder, the fees that come in are used to offset some of the cost of one of the teachers in the program. So we have three classrooms. Uh, there are approximately, you know, between fifteen and twenty staff associated to the program. We currently have about eighty-five students enrolled in our preschool program, of which about half of those students are, um, paying a tuition. The other half are there, um, in terms of placement based on, uh, services they're receiving. So again, happy to answer any questions, um, or maybe Finance Sub has anything to add.
Yep, and we, we had reviewed all the local communities, and really what we were trying to do and what we, we're not setting as policy, but more as a, hey, as we are, you know, laying out what the next years look like and, you know, contracts that we're laying out, is also just laying out what we expect the costs to be on certain programs that are affected by those increasing costs. Um, so as Tom said, as you, as you adjust these, it at least keeps the money for the curriculum, for the staff, for everything else that we're trying to accomplish kind of level, you know, as these costs continue to arise. So this kind of keeps us aligned with what we're doing on many of the other, you know, associated costs throughout the district. It's why we laid it out in this way.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Gianna?
Well, thank you guys, um, for all this information, and again, all China, all those puzzle pieces of money that is just an incredible task. I, um, like, I'm just nervous looking at three thousand dollars and thinking about families that have, you know, a lot of kids or I, like, I, I'm trying to think, like, and I get the whole, like, you know, they want to be able to plan for it and like, increasing costs on the other end. I'm just thinking, like, directly, what's gonna, what more are they gonna be getting for three thousand dollars? Like, I feel like we're, we're raising it just for other costs and stuff, but the kids are still gonna be getting the same thing. And I, like, three thousand dollars is a lot of money, especially if you've got, you know, chances are if you have a kid in preschool, you got other kids that you're paying for. That just makes me a little ner- like, I, like, I trust you guys completely, but this just makes me nervous looking at three thousand dollars, knowing.
I'm happy to take the first stab at it. I think when we looked at surrounding communities, Gianna, I think what our structure is, I don't, we're most certainly not the highest. Um, I think it's kind of keeping in track with what we're seeing increases in other communities. I think this is also much less expensive than a private preschool would cost a family. I know it's not full day every day, but those can run you, you know, seven, eight hundred dollars a month for a program. And so with the course of the year, you're paying, you know, seven, eight, nine thousand dollars compared to the three thousand we're charging. I know it's half-day. I know it's only school year, but I do think that, you know, if, as costs continue, if we don't have revenue to offset it, then more resources are gonna go to the program. So I think the attempt was to try to keep the fee associated with the program consistent with the increase in costs we're seeing. Everything is more expensive, not just staffing, but even materials that are used in the program. So I think that was kind of the dialogue we had in regards to why we were looking at it th- from this way.
Yeah. Thank you for all that.
Welcome.
And I think too, Gianna, it's just, um, I agree, I agree. That is, is a big number, but I also think just having a plan. I kind of look at the history of this, and I'm not into fixing others' committees where they didn't do anything. But some of the previous, I mean, we went a decade without changing this. Um, it's probably not the right approach, right? You know, for, for anybody involved. You know, the costs changed over a decade, and we changed it for the first time last year in a decade. I mean, that probably wasn't right, because essentially what we did as a committee, not we, but we as a committee, is we used up resources there from other things, whether it's the science curriculum, whether it's the math curriculum, whether it's this or that. And we used it for this program, which probably wasn't correct either. Um, so I kind of look at this as, hey, this is what the costs look like as a escalating cost over the next three years for this program. You gotta at least kind of stay level, is kind of the way I looked at it, to where other programs aren't funding this program, is what we talked about. And this isn't the only conversation. Um, this is the one as of right now that we're talking about. But we're, we're probably gonna have to look at this in many different areas of, you know, fees that are charged to, you know, those who take advantage of these programs, um, or bus, anything that we have to, we're gonna have to look at that overall as to what's going up and make sure we're not taking from other places, um, because you are taking dollars from other places to fund this. If, you know, I know it doesn't feel that way, but we are. Um, so that's kind of what we were trying to lay out the next three years, so at least we know this is probably gonna, so say, you know, eventually there aren't any escalating costs, then maybe you should stay flat. Um, but if costs are going up, you have to adjust, is what we had talked about in our committee.
Yeah, and I think that was part of the challenge too, because I remember, I remember you saying all this last year, you know, like, and so now looking at it three, and now there is a bigger number in front of me.
Yeah.
Like, it, it all makes sense, and also.
And we went up, how much did we go, did we go up two hundred dollars last year? Because we went from two thousand to twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
And we were nervous about it, right? We were kind of like, that doesn't seem, I mean, ten, I mean, that was a big percentage, but we also were all like, oh, my gosh, we haven't gone up in ten years. I think it was even more than ten. It was a while, right? And we kind of said, okay, that's reasonable, but now I think we gotta, with what we're dealing with cost-wise, um, from labor to, you know, just all the input costs on this, to at least lay that out. We know what the next three years are probably gonna look like. So it's at least kind of lays it out and keeps everything flat, is what we had talked about, that Finance Sub had talked about.
So it was two hundred last year, and then, so it's essentially like?
We're going up a thousand in four years.
Two fifty, and then two fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I, I, and, and thank you for pointing out that it's, it's not a separate, like, in my head, I think, like, preschool, separate pot, separate, you know, like, like, but it's not.
A lot of these pots, you have to kind of think about them, whether it's, you know, from this to, you know, bus to athletics and to all this. These are, these are all, each of these work against each other.
Yeah.
Um, there's no right or wrong answer. It's just, okay, how do we want to do this? Uh, but you gotta realize that everywhere it's more expensive to do stuff, um, whether it's bus, children's games, whatever it is, everything's getting higher.
Yeah.
You either accept that, but you're gonna take from somewhere else, or you kind of adjust. We're, we, we thought and talked about just, hey, it's time to adjust to make sure we can kind of do everything else we're trying to do in the town.
And a three-year plan, so, and I do appreciate giving people time to.
And we talked three years just because that's kind of what we've been talking about, generally speaking, is what does our three-year plan look like?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, obviously it's coming to somewhat fruition and kind of understanding kind of where we're going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Zach?
Um, just kind of curious, given that there wasn't any increase over, at, um, ten years, is it at all helpful to think about or frame out, um, while it might be a, a thousand dollars over four years? You know, had there been an incremental raise over, call it fourteen years or fifteen years, it would actually only be, you know, a hundred dollars or just sharing or, or thinking about it in that way? Um, if that would be helpful, um, for families that are wrestling with the, the cost of the program? Um, because it does feel like a lot in a, in a short term, but had it been spread over, it would have incrementally maybe aligned more with, with inflation and cost of living adjustment. I don't know if that's a helpful way to think about it.
I think that might, is it okay for me to talk? Yes. I think, I think that might also be helpful for us to just understand, like, where we're headed. Like, are we doing an incremental course correction for the last ten years? And then we're, this is gonna, you know, sort of stay at, like, we're raising costs with inflation? Or is this, are we having a conversation about, like, how we are subsidizing other things through this funding, you know?
So I can tell you, the, that conversation last year that we had, uh, spoke about was, do we peg this to, um, to our overall budget increase? And we spoke about that as to, hey, do we make this go up with, you know, what we're getting from the town? It's three and a half percent, and do we always go up three and a half percent? We talked about policy at that time, and we didn't want to kind of put ourselves into a policy corner. Um, not saying it's wrong or right or wrong, or whatever it ends up being, um, but we did talk about that last year. Um, and we do seem to be course correcting very quickly here, because we have escalating kind of costs that are out of control, um, across, you know, the whole universe here. Um, you know, I, I would say that at the end of this, um, the committee that, you know, that was in place at that point would really need to think through this as to whether they want to make a policy or not. Uh, but, you know, if costs continue to go up, I would think that you're probably gonna continue to have to adjust this. Um, I think it was something that was avoided for a while, because everybody feels exactly like, the shock, the sticker shock, um, is why it wasn't adjusted, or it was just kind of, we just didn't focus on it. Um, but, yeah, you know, I think looking at local communities, this is a competitive, this is still competitive three years from now, based off of what we're competing with in local communities, the East Long Meadows, the Wolverhams, we're still competitive. So, you know, we're still probably below where a handful of them are, um, so.
I thi- I think that totally makes sense. I think, I, the, the thing I'm trying to get clarity on though is, like, if we were trying to explain to people what we're trying to do, are we saying we, we're looking at the cost of the preschool program, and we're trying to adjust to a place where the fee matches that covers the costs? Or are we saying we're trying to, we have costs rising all over the place, and we're trying to make sure that we don't rea- that we don't lose on other things? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. I would say we're just trying to, we're not trying to cover the cost. We are nowhere near covering the cost.
Right.
We're trying to cover the increase in costs of, um, we know that that, you know, staff, um, that is, you know, being utilized for that program, the, it's, they're, it's more expensive.
Right.
There's inflation, there's COLA adjustments. We're trying to keep up with those COLA adjustments. We're not, that you're not gonna cover the cost, and we're no, we're not even in the ballpark of covering the cost.
But so like, if I were trying to explain to people what we were doing, was it accurate to say what we're doing is looking at the increase in costs over the ten years prior to raising, and then the increase in costs over the next three years, and that's what we're trying to get to? Or?
Yeah, I would say that the next three years, you're trying to cover the cost of those, um, adjustments that are being set in stone via any sort of, um, agreement that is currently gonna go into place, that's covering the cost of those agreements.
Okay.
That are being agreed to at this point in time, some tentative, some not tentative. Uh, so that are already embedded in what we're expecting to, for our costs to go up the next three years. It's basically covering those costs. Has nothing to do with really catching up, even though that's kind of what it looks like we were doing over the last four years.
So it's covering costs of pre- the costs of preschool over last year and the next three years, is what we're trying to do with these?
Exactly. The staff that is assigned to basically cover that preschool, their costs are going up by that percentage potentially.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would, yes, I would also say that I think it's important for folks to recognize that our budget for everything else we do is subsidizing the preschool program. And I think, I like Jamie's point about, if we continue to subsidize the preschool program to the extent that we were, it was gonna prevent us from doing other things at other places in the elementary schools, in the middle school, and in the high school. So I think it, one way to say it is that we were overly subsidizing the program in the past, and I think you had said this before. We're trying to reset it to a way that we're subsidizing it hopefully at a more sustainable level. I think the previous subsidy was unsustainable. We're trying to get it to be somewhat sustainable. Again, not to cover the costs.
Right.
That's not the goal, but we don't want to over, over subsidize the preschool program at the expense of some of our other programs.
So I, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, but our current projection is basically. Yeah, but our current projection is basically this keeps us flat for three years. Based off of what we know we already have coming from costs, this would keep us flat. So if we were to be less than any of these, you would be subsidizing more in the next three years than you are this year.
Okay, and what do we, I guess, what do we think is like an appropriate subsidy? Like what rate do we think is like, this is how much we should?
It's whatever the committee thinks is the appropriate subsidy. So this, this is probably the simpler of the conversations of these. There's going to be more complex conversations around what do we subsidize, what do we not subsidize?
Right.
It's the committees, it's, you know, we could say subsidize at all, we could say subsidize, I mean, we're kind of in control of that.
I just mean based on these numbers, like if, what's the operating theory behind those numbers of like what percentage?
Where, that is what the percentage of the cost of the labor is going up.
No, I just, I mean, to, I think, I think maybe you're answering my question and I'm just not understanding, but I think, to Kevin's point, like we want to right-size the amount that we subsidize pre-K out of like, you know, what, what's the right percentage subsidy? Or what's the percentage subsidy that those are based, that those numbers are based on?
Those are currently, yeah, no, no, I follow you. Those are, we're, those numbers are currently based on keeping this subsidy where it currently is. How much are we currently taking out of the general fund? It's very hard because some of these, this staff is fluid. So the staff isn't like, okay, this is the, you know, the soccer coach or this is the football coach. You're very, you know, concrete there. This is a little bit more fluid. So there isn't like, oh, you're the, you're the parent or you're the teacher for this.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a little bit more of a kind of, all we know that those who are helping with this program, their costs are going up significantly based off of what we agreed with, with a handful of them.
Okay.
So that's kind of, it's, it's very fluid on this particular one, correct? I mean, because you have, it's not, there's not a set, exact number of people who are exactly assigned to this.
Yeah, and enrollment fluctuates because students are eligible, I believe it, two years, nine months. And so it's not like it's a cutoff where you're done.
Yeah.
So we bring kids in throughout the year. And this year alone, from where we started to where we are, I think we've seen an increase of about 10 students.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's really fluid. I mean, I would say from a staffing model, you would minimally have three teachers and three paraprofessionals in the program.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's additional staff associated to provide services.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's hard to say what exactly that subsidy threshold is because it's going to change, you know, from month to month based on the total number of students and then the revenue that's coming in based on additional slots being added based on more students joining the program, so.
That makes sense, I just think it is also, it's still hard to explain what, I think in the conversation about fees overall, like, it makes me feel comfortable to have like an operating theory, like this is what we're trying to get to? Or this is what we think is the appropriate town subsidy for this program?
Yeah, I mean, I would say historically, we've always tried to look at what are, what are the costs? What are other communities charging? You know, are we having trouble filling the slots that we have available? I would say, no, that's not been the case. And, you know, so I think in terms of the rate, I think it's been competitive. I think, I understand it's, it could be financial burden on families, but if you need childcare, it's an option. It might not be the right option for you, but based on our program and what our costs are, we believe that this is an appropriate fee for what we're able to offer. I don't know if that helps answer your question. If we don't increase it, we're deciding that additional resources in our budget will go to this program over something else, potentially.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why I think we looked at the increases here. To keep up with the growing costs associated with this program and not to pull from other decisions we'll have to make down the road.
Okay.
Julie, you good?
Maybe, I'm thinking about it.
Okay, think about that for a minute. Marty, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I know everybody in this room knows this, but for anybody that might be watching at home and listening to the discussion, I think it's important to note that we're required to operate preschool to serve students from ages 2.9 months up to kindergarten, students on disabilities, with disabilities. So that, I think that's just an important consideration. So we, we want to make sure we have a robust program in place to properly and appropriately serve those students and then also attract peer role models through the, through the tuition and part of this. So that, that's another sort of part of the fluid dynamic of this, you know, the, the, you know, the amount of, the service levels change, the enrollment changes, the intensity of the need changes. I mean, certainly over time, we're seeing the need to serve more and more preschool students. And I don't anticipate that changing. So we want to make sure that we have a fee structure that not only is, you know, fiscally appropriate, but also ensures that we're, we're attracting and retaining peer role models for students in that program.
Other questions? Gianna?
Thank you for that superintendent. And Tom, thank you for just mentioning, because my brain was stuck on like, well, if you live in Long Meadow and you're going to send your kid to preschool, like, this is an option. It's not mandatory to send your, so like I have to keep remembering that, like, you know. So that, but also, do we have a, like a, I don't know if scholarship is the right word, but like if somebody, like a,
Yeah.
scholarship, the right word, I don't know.
Yeah, so we do have a, an application for families with any of our fees for potential reduced rates. Whether it be transportation, athletics, preschool, that is available and most certainly it's processed through the business office.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I noticed in the recommended motion, there's a discount of $100 for half-day programs, pay the full tuition in full. I just wondered, do we have trouble sometimes collecting the fee? Is that why we're doing that?
We do, most participants. We usually do a deposit at the time of registration and then we have two payments during the year, usually one at the beginning of the school year and the second is usually due February 1st. For the most part, we're successful in collecting. There are occasions when I have to send letters out reminding people of the outstanding balance. But again, paying it upfront, we feel like it's just beneficial, you're doing us a favor by reducing us having to notify you of the payment and that we felt that some sort of discount was appropriate. I believe it's $50 this year. So I increased it to 100 just based on the increased cost of, or rising of the fee.
Thank you. John?
Would that, like would a student's slot be in jeopardy if they were like, you know, seven months over, like I know in my school, our preschool, if kids miss like a certain number of days, like there's a waiting list, so like they're holding a spot that somebody else could be filling.
Fortunately, we haven't had to remove anybody from the program for non-pay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
If we wanted, if we decided that we wanted to change the fees, if there were a change in circumstances, we would have to, it would have to come to the school committee again? Are we, are we putting out projected, I'm trying to look at what our motion is. Are we putting out like projected tuition for the three years or we're setting the tuition for all three years?
I would say the expectation, at least in my mind, was that this would set the tuition and would allow, would prevent us from having to bring this back next spring and the year after in terms of establishing the rate for the fee for preschool tuition.
Okay.
I think that was the intent of finance subcommittee in terms of their recommendation.
There's always a process to reconsider and amend your previous votes.
Okay, any further discussion? Here, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee set the preschool rate for the 2023-24 school year as $2,500, for the 2024-2025 school year as $2,750, and for the 2025-2026 school year as $3,000 for the half-day program. A discount of $100 for the half-day program will also be offered to parents who pay the tuition in full by August 1st of each year.
Great, is there a second?
Say.
Thank you, Jamie. Any further discussion?
Type on Mary? Does that matter, Diane?
No. This is, this is just for you.
All right, roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me, thank you. Okay, so moving along to the policy subcommittee, there is no report. We do have a curriculum subcommittee report. We met on February 15th. But because of our snow days, I actually reached out to Diane and said, did we already report about that? But no, we had not, so just briefly. We, we really looked at our school committee goals and thought about updates on things that come under our curriculum heading. And so Sue provided some detailed updates about universal design for learning, our multi-tiered systems of support, diversity, education, and inclusion, social, emotional learning, and vision of the graduate. And we've been hearing these themes throughout the school year, but we did have a formal update. Some new business, we talked about the ELA curriculum renewal update. The process is starting, the ELA curriculum renewal process, I believe, will take place next year with the goal of implementing potentially new ELA materials during the 24, 25 school year. We also had a discussion regarding the instructional vision of reading, particularly regarding science of reading and balanced literacy. Sue shared with us that the district is in the progress of securing a consultant to complete a literacy review. Does anybody have any questions?
And I can add to that, that we are in fact kicking off the elementary lit review on April 3rd?
3rd.
Awesome, yeah.
So we'll gather some of the key stakeholders and then we'll be on our way.
Great, that's great.
Mary?
Yes, Gianna?
Thank you for all that. Sue, so I remember, it's been a long time since I was on curriculum sub, then it wasn't, then I was on it again. I'm pretty sure I'm not on it right now because I didn't go to that.
You're not on it, I had the same.
I'm very still can't remember all that.
But I do remember, and I remember talking to Jamie about this, to focus on ELA 7th and 8th grade? Like is that part of what this, this is?
This is only elementary, K5, and then we'll roll up.
Because that, like I remember that was kind of a, I'll speak for myself, but kind of like a priority because 7th and 8th grade ELA was, so, okay, so elementary is?
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying.
I know, and I'm trying not to say.
But, yeah.
I think it was, we were, I think the STEM was definitely, and that STEM was awesome. I mean, that's kind of where we wanted to go, and so it was fair between both Glenbrook and Williams, because it was not.
Yeah.
I mean, we all can admit it, which is, was not, you know, Glenbrook was getting a way higher caliber of, you know, education in STEM than Williams was. Now it feels like we're, ELA was the other one that we were really worried about is the ELA getting up to where Glenbrook was.
So they've done a ton of work on alignment in ELA at both middle schools.
Okay.
As the new department chair, and they, both schools in the 6th grade now have an ELA slash math addition to the 6th grade.
Okay, it was the 7th and 8th grade?
Yeah, I would, I would say that that might be a good one for the curriculum to take a look at and kind of digest and go, okay, is it, you know, the STEM kind of revisiting, great, looks good. But that ELA, there's a, there's a, there's a big difference between one school to the other. So, you know, me, being, having a child at Williams, I would go, I'm going to send my kid to Glenbrook. I think there's a better, there's a better ELA there, in my opinion. I've watched my kid go through it, I've watched my second kid go through it. I know one, somebody who works with me has their kids at Glenbrook. I see what they're doing versus what my students are doing in the same exact grade, it's different. So I, I think that's what you're saying, trying to be nice about it. But the reality is, is that there's a difference, I don't think curriculum-wise, but there's a difference in the education between those two schools and ELA. It's, it's.
It was on our.
It was on our radar.
When I was on.
And thanks, because I forgot, I completely forgot about it, but it was definitely something that I don't think you're going to fix overnight, but it's, hey, keep your eye on this because it does look a little disconnected. Not that anybody's doing it wrong, but just, hey, how do we align this so Williams and Glenbrook aren't that far apart?
We've done a ton of alignment work there, so they meet every month as a department and are working to bring in, you know, more interesting literacy, same old, and so trying to align pedagogy and teaching methodologies in 7th and 8th, but 6th as well.
Yeah.
Kind of rolling up.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah, and thank, and I'm not, you know, and I can talk to you about it, but I just remember when I was on curriculum sub, we were heading into the summertime and it was 7th and 8th grade ELA at the middle, you know.
I just thought you were still on curriculum sub.
Yeah. So, okay, so it's elementary, so this is talking about elementary right now.
So elementary will start and then it will roll up through, formal, the formal review, yes.
And so will that be like, roll up like in a couple of months or like next year, or like how long does?
We will start the elementary work like next week and hope to finish a lot of the detailed work by next week. I can give you a better report once we meet with the first meeting.
Yes.
And then taking a look at piloting some, if we find we need to pilot some new materials next year for elementary. During that time, we can start the middle school kind of review as well and look for that to roll up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the formal review, I should say.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. And I think the, the review, it does actually, to do it with fidelity, the way that the state recommends, it does take time to ensure teacher buy-in, so that to me is a very reasonable timeframe because it's not a quick purchase, it's really something that has to be well thought out. I'm really excited to hear that it's going to start this school year. And I think that the timeframe would be reasonable for the implementation if we were to move in that direction for the following school year for elementary. And to Gianna's point, I think that the following year it would make sense for middle school. And I know that a lot of that is contingent upon budget and other curriculum areas that we might be looking at. We have our math upcoming meeting, that's what we're scheduling the curriculum sub for. So a comment I had made, I think it was in our smaller group, maybe not the larger committee, but just having a timeline for these renewal processes, I think is important because there's budget considerations for this, so.
Yeah, we had a conversation, I think that was you and I had a conversation about budget and curriculum and how we kind of were working it now and wish to work it in the future.
Yes, so thank you. Marty, did you have something to say?
No.
Okay, all right, anyone else? Okay, thank you. We do not have any ongoing business, but we do have some new business.
You have, before you, a consent agenda that is actually reflective of a new policy that you have which requires the school committee to accept donations that become property of the school district. And also a reflection of the great support that we get from parents in this community. And so with the consent agenda includes four donations and it also includes an overnight field trip request form to allow four students from the Longwood High Key Club to attend a district educational conference in Springfield on March 31st through April 2nd. So with it being a consent agenda, the items can be taken together on a single vote if that makes sense to the committee.
That makes sense to me. Does that sound good to everyone? Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee approve the consent agenda for March 28th, 2023.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Gianna. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Just to thank all the parents that contributed at the conclusion of recent concerts and thank the Blueberry Hill PTO for donating a water bottle filling station as well.
All right, great, and I will entertain a motion to, for executive session.
And again, just to confirm, we're going to reconvene into open session, if that is correct.
Potentially.
Okay.
Two maybe.
Yes.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Launch Chapter 38, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units F and with non-union personnel, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations and the Assistant Superintendent for Learning, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, to reconvene into open session.
Great, do we have a second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Okay. Great. Kevin?
Yes.
All right, stand by.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me.
Are you guys all set?
So when we come back in, what do I say? Welcome back to open session? I don't remember what happened and then, okay. Thanks, everybody. Oh.
Are you guys all set?
Couple of seconds. Number 13.
Oh, yeah, I got my papers all mixed up. Oh, okay, oh.
And then I'll do it.
Okay. Okay, we are ready.
Okay.
Sorry for the delay.
Go for it, stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome back into open session. I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Great, roll call vote, Zach?
Give me a second.
Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Gianna? Roll call vote, Zach?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
All right. Anybody that stayed on is ready.
Everybody, I really felt proud at the end there.